Good evening. It's 5:15 on October 8th. We're in the Tom Baker Room of the City County Building. This will be the Board of City Commissioners' meeting. Before we call a meeting in order, though, I believe Chaplain Carr is here to give us an invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you tonight for the fact that we live in the greatest nation in this world, a nation that was built upon your precepts. And so, Father, we thank you for the freedom that we have. We thank you also, Father, for our first responders in Bismarck and the surrounding area, and we ask your protection to be upon them, every one of them, Father, and our city workers as well. God, just be with them. I also want to thank you tonight for our commissioners and our mayor, and I lay them before you, Father, and I ask you to bless them. Tonight, I ask you to give them your wisdom in all things. I pray that, tonight, God, that your hand will be upon them and your hand will be upon this meeting, and that everything that will be said and done will bring glory to you and will continue to make Bismarck the great city it is. Again, Father, thank you for everyone that's here tonight, and thank you again for the privilege that we have to serve you. In the name of your son, we pray. Amen. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I also remind everyone to continue to pray for Florida and North Carolina and Tennessee and all those areas that are facing the hurricanes right now.
Thank you. All right. If we can call the meeting in order, if we can call roll.
Commissioner Risch?
Here.
Commissioner Zinkler?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Schmitz?
Here. Our first item today is a proclamation. The proclamation is, whereas October marks a momentous occasion as we celebrate Hartview Foundation's 60th anniversary of providing substance use treatment services, therefore be it resolved that I, Mike Schmitz, Mayor of the City of Bismarck, on behalf of this commission, do hereby recognize Hartview Foundation for their 60 years of service to the citizens of Bismarck. We extend our deepest gratitude to Hartview Foundation for its steadfast commitment to our city and its people. And I think I saw, would you like to come and receive this now? At this point in time, we have our public comment period. The public comment period is restricted to items on the consent agenda or the regular agenda that is not a public hearing. So anyone who would wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, the topic you're speaking to us on, and then sign in on the ledger sheet.
If I understand it correctly, then that would be the issue involving the item number four E, consent to request a hearing, sufficiency of protest on resolution. Am I correct?
Yes, because that's not stated as a public hearing, so absolutely, comment, please.
And I'm here to object to that, and we filed a protest, and I think some of my neighbors have done so too, and that has to do with lighting on Clydesdale Drive. And I think my letter should be in your records. We basically assert that that is an inappropriate expenditure of money. It's not necessary. It's a waste of time and money. It's a future expenditure that we're tying up to people. I just think it's absolutely unnecessary, and speaking with some of my neighbors, they are in agreement with me. I would also note that the way the plan is designed, it's got a light pole right between two trees in the middle of my driveway area, which means that they're going to probably have to trim those or cut them out. It ruins the beauty of that area and those trees. And I think we protest it, and we object to it, and then we ask that the council reject that proposal.
I know who you are. Did you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Clark Borman, and I live in Clydesdale Drive in Bismarck.
And can you sign in too, please, Clark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I've done that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is John Brocker. I have the same issue that he has on North Fourth Street. We went through this six years ago. Commissioner Aspig was actually one of the people that testified against this because there is no problem with lighting up there. We have lamp posts in our yards that are all operational that provide plenty of lighting. As far as a safety concern goes beyond that, over the last six years in that area, there have been seven automobile accidents, all of them in the daytime, and there is no other issue. I would ask that you reject this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Again, this is public comment for the consent agenda items or an item that is not public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, city staff, my name is John Simmers with Bismarck Aero Center. The purpose of my statement is to bring to your attention several loose ends that are associated with item E4 on the consent agenda. With exception of Commissioner Risch, each of you may recall my previous testimony regarding these matters on May 28th. It's important for me to go on record stating that we renew these same objections as stated during the previous meeting on May 28th, 2024, regarding airport development matters and lease amendment that's on tonight's agenda. I don't want to go in and rehash all of the items discussed on our correspondence dating May 24th and during the commission meeting on May 28th, but I do want to bring to your attention several unresolved issues still related to that issue, still related to this agenda item. We still do not have accurate information on how this development will impact access to our parking and access to our current facility. Airport officials communicated to our organization on June 27th that we would have continued meetings to discuss what the plan is. To date, we have not heard any updates since June 27th regarding this plan and frankly, how the development's going to directly impact our parking and access to our business front. So we're currently having ongoing issues with ramp access to our building and restricted parking due to the construction project that's already kind of in play, and we're still looking for some mitigation on how these issues are going to be resolved going forward. So the development agreement, and then the second thing I want to bring to your attention, the development agreement that's included with Executive Air Taxi included as enclosure one states a completion date of October 31, 2025. You know, I get this is forward development for the airport, but it's, you know, based on the development agreement, the completion date is set for October 31, 2025. Through previous planning meetings, it's been communicated this is a two-year project, and I just am concerned that the completion date of October 31 is realistic. And why that's important, we're concerned that this project will be extended without a definitive completion date, and will have ongoing impacts relating to our business operations resulting from construction mess, dust, debris, noise pollution, continued building access issues, parking issues, and things that will defer or deter customers from accessing our facility. So I just want to bring to your attention those items still have not been, the mitigation process has not been communicated to us, and I believe that that's really important here to go on the record. So as a result, we have to object to this lease that's on the agenda until our concerns have been addressed. I do believe that this item has been mishandled from a communication and planning standpoint, and we're just asking for better communication and being a part of it. Our organization, Bismarck Aero Center, has a great track record of collaborating with airport officials. We've exercised full cooperation regarding operational requirements at the airport. Our projects are well planned, and we meet our development obligations. So we're here just to insist that all airport development processes are held to these same standards of collaboration, meeting the requirements of the development agreement, and we just ask the airport to reciprocate good collaboration and good communication to us as one of the city's largest tenants at the airport. So we're going to continue to explore options and how to navigate these challenges within what's in, with what's in our control, and, you know, we're continuing to investigate all those options, visited with several of you on this matter over the last several months, and I just appreciate your continued attention to make sure that this is, you know, planned out and communicated appropriately. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Risch.
I guess what's your request tonight? Do you want us to deny it till you get to speak with the airport authority more?
Well, you know, we're, yeah, we want to know what the plan is. This, you know, if you look at the development, it directly impacts access to our facility, parking, all that's going to be displaced. Those loose ends have not been closed with us, and so we're asking you to deny that tonight until the airport follows through on their commitments. I'm pretty easy to get along with. Just do what you say you're going to do, and that's kind of the rub here. The follow-through hasn't happened.
Make sure that responds to your question. Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is public comment period. Anyone who wishes to speak to a consent item or non-public hearing item on the regular agenda, please come forward. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Public comment period is now closed. Before I ask Commissioners what your wishes are on the consent agenda, I do request that item, get to get the right, E4 be pulled separate because I must not act on that one. I have a potential conflict of interest. E4, the one that was just talked about. So I would, I'm requesting, I guess, a motion to do that. I can make the motion if I can have a second to pull that from the consent.
Just pull it.
Okay. So with the rest, with regard to the rest of the consent agenda.
As for the rest of the consent agenda, minus item E4, I move approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, the only other question I had, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, was item 4E, the streetlight. I received an email from our city engineer today, and he was talking about.
We haven't got that.
That's not on consent.
You're correct.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll get to that.
I'm moved.
All right. So any other discussion? If not, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Zinkler?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. And now I'll ask someone to, I'm going to step aside, so Commissioner Zinkler, could you chair for the rest of the three of us?
The apple's got to fall a little farther tonight. So impromptu, someone should have coached me up on how to do this, maybe. That's okay. We're all good. So at the table, the three of us, we have item E4. Do we have any questions or discussions on that item that we need to have staff answer? Fisher Connolly?
Greg, could you come up?
I'm sure you can articulate it better than us since the question is out there for the whole room to hear. If you can kind of state the perspective of the airport and the things that were discussed during public comment.
Okay, sure. Commissioner, and other Commissioners, I guess we don't really feel like we have any loose ends. We've done what we said we were going to do, contrary to maybe what was stated earlier. The unresolved issues, I don't see that there's an unresolved issue with the parking. The parking discussion has been had. We've talked about it three or four times. The parking is going to be laid out as per the drawings inside the packet that you have tonight. As far as access to the building, we talked about adding a gate, I think, at our last meeting, because I wasn't happy with not having a gate inside that turnaround area, and so we've already put one in, and we're working with the fire department now to make sure that they have, or they can gain access through that gate, because it's a manual gate. It's not one of our normal inner security program card access fiber optic type of gates. So we've taken care of that. And as far as the apron, not having enough apron space, ramp access issues over there, and, you know, they have more ramp now than they've ever had before. We just got done doing two multimillion-dollar apron expansions up on the north end of the airfield, GE Apron Phase Four and Five. We have, I think, a final walkthrough on Phase Five in the coming days. So, you know, I don't know, I think we've done what we said we were going to do. It's a matter of competition between the two FBOs. We've heard from Mr. Simmers before and how he doesn't, you know, like what was happening, but we have to be fair to everybody. He did not include the space that where the Executive Air Taxi's hangar is going to go, and we have to be fair to everybody, and we can't just, if it's not in his development agreement, then it's fair game for somebody else to come in and develop on it. And Executive Air Taxi took it upon themselves to propose a building that filled a large gap in that area, and his building 22 that he's in now has been extended twice. Originally, he was supposed to be out of that building a number of years ago, and then it was extended, and then it was extended again. So I don't know. That's what I got to say. Be happy to answer any other questions or detailed questions.
Commissioner Connolly, you have another question?
I appreciate the explanation because, like was mentioned before, Commissioner Risch was in here when we had that discussion, and it's all good for the city with it being airplayed and everything to get that update add. So just appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay.
No other questions? Item 3E4, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, please call the roll.
Mr. Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinkler?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Now we'll move to the regular agenda. First item is receive a report from the Bismarck Mandan Chamber EDC related to economic development services provided, and I believe in the next meeting we'll have a similar report from the Downtowners. They were just unavailable today, so Brenda.
All right. I think the, thank you very much for the technology. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you very much for allowing us to come from the Bismarck Mandan Chamber EDC to provide an update. This would be the quarter three update already, and so we've got lots of great things going on, and I'll share what those items are. So along the lines of workforce development, because I think a lot of times people think that economic development is only putting up buildings, and that is as far from the truth as you can get, because buildings need people, and workforce is certainly important. And so some of the things that our team has really been working hard at is connecting with the folks that are here and part of our existing workforce. A few things that we want to highlight for sure is the internship network, and I reported on this in one of the previous quarter reports, but I think it's worth repeating again. We held an event towards the end of the summer, and we had over 50 young people attend. I think we had like 20 RSVPs and over 50 young people attended, which tells us that these young interns who are here from states across the nation, it's not just UND, NDSU, University of Mary, here for interns or internships in Bismarck and Mandan. These are students from across the United States who are in our Bismarck Mandan community, who are working temporarily as an intern, and they desire to make connections with the people that are their age and who are also doing the same thing. We don't have an agenda necessarily when we get together with them. We really want to provide a space to help them meet other people and to talk a little bit about what's going on in our beautiful city, because our hope is that they will go back to whatever university or college they came from at the completion of their internship and graduate from college and choose to come back to our community to live and work. And so it's been a really amazing opportunity to connect with them. We do have another event coming up in November where we will invite some of that same group. Some of them are still here, some are rotating through to different internships, and so with the success, we'll continue to do that. This particular program or event at the end of the summer was held at Laughing Sun, and like I said, there was over 50 young people in that area throwing axes and enjoying good food and great conversation. Along the lines of students is the students who are in our Bismarck public school system as well as our private schools. And so we are, we kicked off a Student Leadership Network particip, or Network. Student leadership is very similar to Leadership Bismarck Mandan. What we do is we take high school students, and they apply to be a part of this program. We had over 30 students who applied to be in the Student Leadership Network, and they get to go through a program where they're introduced to various businesses who are in the community to make those connections and potentially see what they might want to do in their college career, or maybe not go to college. Maybe they want to do, go right into the workforce, but it gives them an opportunity to have a touch and an inside look into the different places that we have available in Bismarck. This will go on for the next several months. It's a great opportunity, again, for us to make connections with our very own students here. And then we kicked off the New American Leadership Group, and so again, that is kind of a spin-off of Leadership Bismarck Mandan, but we have also heard from various entities like Sanford, CHI, NISC, Cloverdale, that they have recruited workforce from various places. Now, keep in mind, these are actually American citizens. These are not people who are here illegally, but they've come to the United States and they've come into the Bismarck community and are a part of our workforce. Many of them don't come from a community where they feel comfortable that they can come to a city commission meeting. That's not the type of government that they are accustomed to seeing, and so we want to introduce them to how do you interact with your local government? How do you local, interact with your state government? How do you go into the bank and make a deposit? Because many of these people in the country in which they came from, that's not a comfortable thing for them. They don't give their money to the bank to deposit it. There's just a lot of different things and a lot of different cultures, and so our goal is to expose these folks to the business community, to the various options that they have as a citizen of our community of Bismarck, and help them through that process. And then finally, along the lines of workforce development, is our welcome initiative. This came to us a few months back at the request of First Lady Schmitz, and to really quote her, she said, you know, we're North Dakota nice, but sometimes we're not always that nice here, and we used to, in the good old days, we used to invite people over to dinner when they moved into the neighborhood, and we used to spend a little bit more time getting to know our neighbors. And so we are working through our workforce development team on a welcome initiative on how do we best welcome new people to the Bismarck community, and so more to come on that. Higher education. We can't kick off fall without talking about higher education, and while I don't work at the University of Mary anymore, I certainly know a lot of things that are going on there as well as BSC and United Tribes Technical College. This is a group of students who can be our next workforce, people who can fill our workforce gaps. BSC had overall an 11% increase in enrollment this fall. They're at overall 4,206 students, which is amazing. University of Mary is at 3,853 total students. That's their online population as well as their undergrad. And just a shout out for them, they had another record-breaking undergrad enrollment season, and so this fall, they welcomed a record-breaking class of freshmen. Again, I've said it before, I know that they've said it, but 65% of their incoming freshman class nearly every year comes from another state outside of the state of North Dakota. We have a golden opportunity every fall when those young people show up in Bismarck to check into residence halls at the University of Mary to welcome them and to show them that this community is a place for them to get their education as well as graduate and become part of our workforce. And then also, United Tribes Technical College, they had nearly a 6% increase. They've primarily got technical degrees, but they're also filling some things like welding, driving trucks and things. We know that those are really, really important, and so kudos and congratulations to UTTC for helping us to bring students to our community through BSC, University of Mary, and UTTC to fill workforce gaps. We work with all three of them at the Chamber EDC to help understand what the needs of the students are and to connect them with employers to make sure that they know what's happening and what's available for them. In the business development area, there's a lot going on here. Nathan Schneider and the Economic Development Team have been very, very busy. I'll start out first by the screenshot there. We send out the Bismarck Mandan economy at a glance. I think most of you received that, but just to kind of point out, from July of 2023, if you compare '23 to '24, we were up 80% of new commercial permits issued. We had an increase in commercial permit valuations, and certainly our airport passenger boardings, there's no struggle there. That airport is busy all the time. We're helping to monitor local ordinances to make sure that things are certainly in place so that we can have good business environment. We're assisting in some ongoing projects. We have some confidential projects that I really can't report on, but sometimes just saying to people, we have some confidential projects going on. You know, many times when somebody wants to come to our community, they have to sign an NDA because they don't want the whole world to know just yet, but we do have some projects in the works, and I look forward to the day when I can stand in front of you and say, we've got something to share with you, and we'll, you'll be the first ones to know. Our primary sector recruitment is really a program that we're utilizing online marketing. So when we send out our emails, our regular So when we send out our emails, our regular updates to various people who have asked to be in contact with us, we create awareness. We want to tell them about the community first and kind of bring them in and let them know all of the beautiful things that happen in Bismarck. And once they start interacting with us, we continue to then feed them information so that they're aware of what are the opportunities in the Bismarck community, and then we motivate their engagement. We've started sending out packets of goodies, things that are made in this community to these people to let them know that you can come to Bismarck either to live and work or to bring your business, whether it's a small business, a medium business, or a large business, and so we're interacting in a very positive way with those opportunities. And then finally, our continued focus in Q4, much of this has been things that we've been working on throughout, throughout the last two quarters, but it's worth repeating because they're important. I've had the opportunity to sit on the Steering Committee for Land Development Code. I'm learning more about land development codes than I ever wanted to know. It's actually quite interesting, most of it, but it is important, and we've heard from some of the developers and folks prior to this group kicking off that there's, there's old code, there's old things in the system that City of Bismarck needs to update. You recognize that as well, and that's why you're doing this project, and I appreciate the opportunity to have a voice at that table. I am your voice for Keep It Local Property Tax Coalition, and so we have a measure, measure number four, on the ballot, and some people have already voted. Others are going to wait until in November to vote, but we actively participate as a Chamber EDC on the Keep It Local Coalition. We believe that the property tax item should be something that you as local commissioners, as well as county commissioners, should have the responsibility and the ability to act upon to help the things that we need in our cities, rather than shifting that over to our state legislators. That's not what we voted them in for. We voted for you to hold you accountable for spending the money in the, in the right way. And then finally, I am a committee member to review the Bismarck Event Center RFP process that was brought by City Administrator Jason Tamanik a while back, and so we'll be meeting, and I'll be participating on that and, and sharing my guidance on that particular project. Those are the things that we are working on. There's lots more. I'd take questions if you have any, but that is my update for Q3.
Any questions? Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you for your time.
Next item is a public hearing on the confirmation of the 2024 Health and Safety Assessments. And this is a public hearing. It's, I'm just going to open up the public hearing our way, so anyone who wishes to speak to this can come forward. A second call. A third and final call on the, on this. The public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing and no call, roll.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next item is a public hearing on, yeah, is on the Special Assessment District to confirm the assessments as amended. So we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone who wished to comment, please come forward. A second call. A third and final call. Okay, before I close the public hearing though, I'm going to request that our commissioners consider that in light of the North Dakota Supreme Court decision and Sinski Reynolds LLC versus City of Grand Forks at the public hearing be continued to October 22nd, the next regular meeting, with the direction for the Special Assessments Commission to modify their findings if deemed appropriate due to the most recent case, or so that we follow that case, and I'll ask Attorney Combs to come forward and explain why we need to do that.
Mayor and Commissioners, there's been a court case in the last month that came down that affects special assessments, how everyone in North Dakota does them. The city attorneys' groups have discussed different ways to try to conform to it, because we all do it the same way. So there is a process that we have all worked together that we think will conform to what's happening, but still meet our October 31st deadline to certify to the county. So it would just require the Special Assessment Committee make an additional finding. So that's why if we can leave it open so you can get additional information, remand it down to Special Assessment Committee, and then it'll come back to you at the next meeting, we think that we can be in conformance with that court case.
Commissioner Conley.
Would that apply to the protest too? Because that's specially assessed too, isn't it?
The, oh, no, this, that is about the resolution of necessity. That was not discussed at all in this case. This was about confirming of benefits. It can't be related to the cost of it. It has to be related to a benefit instead, so it changed how the numbers are calculated, not whether it's necessary to do the project.
All right, thank you.
So Commissioners, can I get a motion to?
I'll make a motion to have a continuance on item 4C.
Second.
And remand to Special Assessment Commission?
Yes.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing and no call, roll.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next item is a public hearing on ordinance 6587 to create a prohibition against camp, the, to prohibit camping ordinance. That's why a lot of people are here. Do I need, anyone from staff going to make an introduction or not? I'm fine if they don't. Go ahead, Jason, if you don't mind, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Obviously, we've got a good number of people here that have an interest in the next item on the agenda. Maybe just to set the table a little bit for how we got here, by no means was this an overnight decision. This has been something that, as an organization, we have been talking about a number of different aspects to, to our community since, at least since the onset of the Mayor's Gold Star Community Task Force, which was formed by Mayor Mike Seminary back in 2017, and that was an effort that was primarily led by Bismarck Burley Public Health. Through a number of meetings, a number of, frankly, a number of years that have gone by, we are at a point in our community where we have, we are faced with some new challenges, and some of these challenges are primarily relating to the collection of personal items stored on public property. And really what I'm talking about here is places within our community, whether it be on the boulevard, in front of a business, or residences, or in areas of downtown, we have a, an accumulation of personal items that have, in some cases, begun to pose problems for law enforcement. We also have situations where they are generating a number of complaints by homeowners, property owners, and business owners. And so what we have in front of you tonight is one of many other actions that will follow down the road. This is the first step to provide a tool for the law enforcement, for Bismarck Police Department, to be able to respond to situations where we do have calls for complaints effectively, where we've got personal items that have been accumulating on public property. What we are not doing here tonight, we are not intending to criminalize homelessness. We are not here to, to pick on anyone in our community. What we are here to do is start addressing some of the issues that are generating complaints in our community. And so this ordinance, the intent is to provide law enforcement with a means to effectively address these situations when they occur. Are we going to be out throughout the community looking for these situations? No, generally we are complaint response. We are driven by complaints, and when we have situations, we are looking for answers, and this is one attempt to try and address some of these concerns in our community. Are we done trying to address the bigger issue here? By no means. This is the first step of many steps to come in the near future. What this is primarily is this is something for law enforcement to use to address some of the situations that we have. There will be other steps. There will be other attempts to provide service for those that are seeking service in the near future from public health. Renee Mock, our Public Health Director, although not directly affiliated with this ordinance, I'm sure would have a number of responses for other questions that would likely come up. The intent tonight here is to really primarily focus on the, the proposed ordinance and recognizing that this is a means for our police department to start addressing some of the complaints, to make sure that our community remains safe and healthy and a place for everybody to have protection, but also just general opportunity as well. So with that in mind, Mayor, I know you, you've got some comments for the folks that are willing to share their public thoughts, and as staff, if there are questions that come up along the way, we would either be happy to address those as needed, or we can run a collection of those questions and try and address them all at once at the end. One thing I should also note for, for anybody that has noticed, Commissioner Cleary is not here. She was unable to attend this meeting tonight. However, she does have some comments that she would like read for the record as part of the public hearing, and then she had asked that I would do that. So once everyone else has had an opportunity to share their thoughts on the ordinance, I, I would like the chance to just share Commissioner Cleary's thoughts for you as well, because she really did want to be here for this. Unfortunately, her job required her to travel, and she is in the air right now and not able to participate in the meeting. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them now. If not, Mayor, we're, we're ready as needed.
Okay. Anyone have questions of Jason before I open up public hearing? Okay. Thank you, Jason. Thank you for the introduction. So this is, this will be a public hearing. We have a lot of people here who wish to speak. I'm not going to hold a hard and fast rule, but I'm going to ask for roughly a five-minute time limit to your presentation. I'm also going to request that if someone or several people have already spoken and said the same thing, you can come to, approach the podium, please, and say, I agree with how that side was presenting their information, so that we can make sure we get to everyone and be respectful of everyone's time. Also, I request that everyone make sure that we respect everyone and each other in the room. With a lot of people here, you know, our emotions sometimes can become fragile, and we want to make sure we keep proper decorum. So in the event that it is determined that I see or hear belligerent-type language, I will then ask that person to leave the room, because we need to have respect and decorum in the room. So with that, I now open up the public hearing for ordinance 6587. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name, and do sign in. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Michael J. Walsh. I have, grew up with the business, king queen laundry car and dog wash, and way back in 1960, many, many, many interactions with law enforcement. So, but what I'm going to speak about is that, how, what kind of, what, what the situation now is, where law enforcement didn't be like that before, but now it's like, if you say anything to them and try to explain something to them.
So sir, keep your comments to the ordinance, please.
It is specifically to the ordinance, okay? I appreciate it if you let me reclaim my time here a little bit. Okay, so anyway, House of Color is in the same block, okay? So there's people camping, you know, on House of Color Boulevard, so it's definitely related, and they need a place to go pee-pee and poo-poo, you know, those same people. And Renee Mock, I noticed in one of the meetings that they had on there, on one of the previous ones, she mentioned something about the tri, tri, trioc, I think, I don't know if I pronounce it, but something to do with first responder stuff. Okay, and now, but anyway, and I agree with the, you know, with the chaplain when he said about first responder, you know, giving them the wisdom to do whatever, you know, so, but I've had some really bad experiences, and that's why I want to make sure that there's something more than just them hollering at a person and saying, well, if you got anything to say to us, that's what the courts are for, you know? I don't think it's quite that, it's kind of like a lawfare thing, you know, especially if there's a lot of things that's happening. You know, you guys have authority. John Rich was, I really appreciate you coming down. He was down for half an hour, so he has a little hint to what I'm going to bring up. I've got it on the, on the, and I'll move right along with this. I've got, I'm going to, I got my time thing going, so I'll try to keep within, I don't know if you want me to change it into a chipmunk thing, or, you know, with double speed, but I think I can do it within five to seven minutes at the most. But I'm kind of organized. Do you see on there the, the door there? Okay, this is relating to the encampments. This is relating to those people over in House of Color and that, where they need to go to use the restroom during the day and stuff, and, and our hours are like 14 to 16 hours. I've kept the restroom open there, allowing those people to go. Now I have the intern from University of Mary that we've set it up so that we alarm if somebody's been there too, and we might even have something, if there is some kind of drug, whatever, you know, I'm going to look into it. I don't know how expensive that is, you know, but we, but we don't allow people to be in the bathroom too long and, and most, but we do allow people to go and buy if they ever, you know, I was part of a mission down there in Third World Country. I was with a, you know, with a emergency room doctor, and one of the things he noticed was people doing the pee-pee poo-poo thing out in the open there, and he said, well, I hope that never happens here in Bismarck, you know, and that. But anyway, I'll, I'll move right along here. Okay, we had a situation, if you see on the picture there, now mine is not the smallest, over Guardian Lock, they have a smaller bathroom, but take a look at that, and John, when he was down there, he opened up that lock, it's a privacy lock, within a second, he opened it up, and I didn't think he could do it because he had a thicker key. And my gripe is that they're trying to twist this, and they've been told before, both the city attorney and the, and the, and the police department, that it's a simple lock, and they have to understand it. There's no training required, like picking locks and stuff, and they're twisting the truth so bad and gaslighting and stuff, so.
Sir, so please, this is on the?
I'm trying to move right along.
Okay, because that's, that's kind of off track from what this ordinance is.
I am, no, it's right on track, because, okay, I apologize, but you, but, but if you listen, let me finish what I'm saying, you'll understand where, where it leads to, you know? I know it's going to be a little bit uncomfortable for me, and it's uncomfortable for some of you, some of the, what I'm going to show, you know, but the reality is, that restroom, my help, we, we could find a way so that homeless couldn't use it at all, but I wasn't for that because of my past experience with the mission work and that type of thing. So anyway, the, the door, they destroyed my door, and instead of partnering with a person with the homeless and stuff, and recognizing what we're providing there, the extra expense and, and there, no, they destroyed my door, and then they, but the biggest problem was that if somebody was a tipsy or something a little bit, anybody from the car wash or whatever happened to be in there, and they, they got a little tipsy by the, you can see on the, well, I got to bring this up. Where do you, show me. Oh, it is up there. Oh, okay, yeah, you can see it, okay? So you can see, the biggest thing that I'm after is the life-threatening situation of injury and also of, of, I mean, it's, and it was just so ridiculous for him to do that, and then there's a bunch of other issues in terms of, of saying that staff was there. Yeah, staff was there, it was like from here to, by where those people are standing, but it was away from, along the side there, the, the dog wash is transparent, it's translucent, and we were working in there, trying to get that going in there, and, and no, I mean, but no, they twisted the truth so bad on their report stuff and their insurance stuff, and they twisted it all around, and, and, but I, what I'm looking for is rather than having this lawfare stuff where you force the business owner, mom and pop business or whatever, force them to be, and things like this come up where you, there is, oh, well, that's for the, and then the jail says, well, you get a lawyer and stuff, and I said, well, $2,000 probably minimum in that. Oh, that's the going rate, you know? I mean, it's just, I just, just, it's mind-numbing in terms of past experience with past commissions and past police chiefs and past, past interactions with them, you know? I've had cameras since 1982, by the way. I'm going to move right along here, and I'm going to try to keep, and I see I've. I'm going to move right along here, and I'm going to try to keep it, I see, oh, boy, that really, time really flies. Okay. I thought I had it here. Oh, over here, there, okay. Here's where, you know, the lock and the other, he puts down staff on the report, and I trusted the officer, but this is related to the encampments because, you know, whether businesses can have something like that, and then, you know, especially a non-attended business, a little bit like a rest area or something, but ours, we tend to have somebody there all the time, and I was there, and the dumb bunny, when he picks the phone call, it wasn't like any normal highway patrol type of coordination, Roger, over and out.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm moving along here.
You've actually, sir.
No, I've got some more I want to show.
Sir, sir, you've exceeded your time limit by seven, eight minutes already, so, and this is not, this is not on.
Okay, two minutes. Can you grant me two minutes? I need two minutes.
Sir, this is not even on topic.
I need two minutes. I need two minutes, it's very important, the court of public opinion.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to step away from the microphone because it's not on topic, and you've now become.
I can do, yeah, get a supervisor now.
I can't make consensual contact with you?
No, you're not.
I want you to listen to this.
Get your supervisor right now, you guys are harassing me.
Please shut that down.
I'm a homeless person.
Please shut that down.
Because I'm sick of harassing me. Yeah, this is harassing, shut up.
Certainly, you're not interested in the truth, are you? You're scared of the truth. John got a little sample of it.
Sir, you can leave the room now, please.
Well, I'll just stay here and listen to the rest of it.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Dave Bender. I'm with the Soup Cafe. I'm one of the neighbors of the man here who is in the House of Color area and the ministry on the, that's our corner. We take care of our neighbors, and you can hear that in a way, he's taking care of the neighbors that we're taking care of as well. And so we're thankful that you are putting people over possessions. I did hear that, you know, there's some issues with possessions that are on people's possessions. And just remember, we want you to know that we want to make sure you're keeping people first over possessions. And that's what we're here for on behalf of the Coalition. I'm on the board. I'm also the coordinator at the Soup Cafe, so I have a vested interest in my mission to help these individuals. And I'd like to, if I could, just read the statement from the Coalition. On October 8th, "The Missouri Valley Coalition for Homeless People believes everyone deserves a place to call home. Homelessness has been increasing across our nation and unfortunately in our community. A 2024 survey conducted by the Bismarck Burley Public Health, supported by our additional membership identified 169 individuals who are homeless and in a shelter provided by one of our partner agencies on a single night. Additionally, we found 63 individuals who chose not to go to a shelter that night or weren't in a shelter that night. As a coalition serving southern, south-central North Dakota, our members collaborate to address the needs of the homeless, which range from emergency shelter to permanent housing plus services that help individuals remain housed, including behavioral health support, meals, food assistance, transportation, employment assistance, life skills training, and more. Our coalition applauds our city leaders, including the city commissioners, mayors, the Bismarck Police Department, Bismarck Burley Public Health, for seeking solutions to address the challenges associated with homelessness. However, regarding this ordinance, we believe that more consultation and collaboration is needed to develop a service-oriented, public health-centered plan that involves city outreach beyond law enforcement. To our chagrin, our coalition leadership, which includes the Bismarck shelters, the service providers, we weren't consulted during the drafting of this ordinance. Over the past week, our Board of Directors held two special meetings to consult with the Bismarck Police Department, Bismarck Burley Public Health, and colleagues in Fargo who advised us on a similar ordinance they have. We strongly feel that the city needs more time, at a minimum, a few more weeks, and ideally several months, hopefully prior to the spring thaw, when this situation will come around again, to collaboratively develop a plan to address the displacement of the individuals. A more inclusive collaborative process would include consultation with us, our partner agencies, as well as public health, law enforcement, park and rec, human service centers, business owners, other relevant parties, who could then collectively bring a more detailed plan to the city commission. In sum, before enacting an encampment ban, we would like to see resources invested in solutions that ensure the individuals know where to access the bathroom, they know where to find safe shelter, they learn where to store their belongings. Charging unsheltered individuals with a crime, especially without adequate knowledge of where a shelter might be or treatment options, may only compound their personal challenges and further stigmatize their situation. Current providers are often at capacity, so we urge the city to invest in a collaborative process and detail an action plan that will provide wraparound support as a longstanding strategy and solution. Keys to this investment include city public and continued private funding for proactive outreach, for ensuring and if necessary, expanding current services, shelter capacity, and resource orientation. I'd encourage each of you to imagine that if you suffered a major medical issue resulted in you losing your job, eventually your home, you're already estranged from all of your extended family. To survive, you're living on the streets, but you don't have access to a bathroom, a shower, or a place to store your limited personal items. Shelters and treatment centers are full, you're on the waiting list. The police say that you'll be charged with a crime if you don't move along. Where would you go? Don't we all deserve safety, care, and empathy on our journey to that place that we can call home? We'd like to be consulted, we'd like to be involved, and we agree that people shouldn't be putting their personal property on personal property, but people first before property. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
I'm Joseph Hyman. I am a general manager at Interiors by France in Bismarck, Interiors by Design now. You guys got tough decisions here. I can empathize with that guy. I've watched this guy run that car wash for 40, 50 years now. I'm in favor of this, but I've also got concerns of if this starts on the public areas, where are they going to go to? What private areas are they going to go to? We kind of are in that neighborhood with everybody else, King Coin and House of Color. I don't know if any of you guys have driven up 24th Street just north of Broadway at 6:30 in the morning when I'm going to work, but I can count anywhere from 35 to 40 homeless people, which is concerning. It's getting cold, people can freeze. It's also concerning because there's a lot of drug activity going on there. Somebody was stabbed two weeks ago over there. This also goes on at 16th Street Park, kitty corner from your building here, right on Broadway, at that seating area. I can generally see four to five homeless people there, middle of the day, South 12th Street. It's becoming more and more of a problem in our entire city. So I am in favor of that. I was happy to hear Jason say this is the first step. I don't think we can just keep arresting people, taking them to jail, feeding them, and letting them out the next day, or it's going to become repetitive. I just hope you guys have some ideas and some plans, you know, to take care of this. I mean, we find syringes, bags of weed in our parking lot, they get into our fountain and they bathe. It's just, I don't remember ever seeing this problem in Bismarck before until the last 10 years, and it's just getting worse and worse. And I see it becoming a snowball and rolling downhill if we don't do something about it soon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
One more thing. This is all going on in that neighborhood. That seems to be like the worst neighborhood in the city, you know, and our taxes are going up, and that neighborhood is going down.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Sorry to have.
Before I, don't forget to sign in.
Okay.
All speakers.
Yep. Sorry, I have my laptop with me. I did not have time to print out my notes. My name is Katie Leach. I represent an individual in the city of Bismarck and work for the Department of Emergency Services, and so not as a representative of them, but in my personal and professional perspective, there are some significant community concerns for the individuals experiencing or that may experience this ordinance, and I don't think it necessarily has to do with their property, but the portion of where they're going to sleep. The public property, that is also their property, and unfortunately, if they don't have a place to sleep, this increases vulnerability to them and exposes them to danger. Forcing people to move or hide in less visible areas may expose them to more dangerous conditions, such as isolated areas where they are vulnerable to violence, theft, and other forms of harm, because every individual in this community has a different situation, and so not one-size-fits-all. Health risks, lack of safe sleeping spaces can lead to increased exposure to the elements resulting in heightened risks of hypothermia, heat stroke, and other weather-related issues. Increases in strain on emergency services, higher use of emergency services can, for unhoused people that are pushed into potentially more dangerous or hidden areas such as flood zones, which we saw in the flooding of Fargo, where they were along the river, and so most of their things were destroyed because that was where they were able to sleep. Hospitals, police, and fire departments may see an increase in calls due to heightened risks. Criminalization and legal consequences, increasing criminalization, policies, not even if not the intent, policies that can ban sleeping in public spaces can lead individuals who are already struggling into further detriment, such as tickets, arrests, or fines. This creates legal records, fines they cannot pay, jail time, making it even harder for them to escape their homelessness while creating barriers. This also increases barriers to assistance. Having a criminal record or fines can make it even more difficult for unhoused individuals to access housing, employment, or other essential services perpetuating the cycle of homelessness. If they don't have places to sleep in public spaces, they get disconnected from resources. The hospitals, your clinics, your food, they're all in city limits, and so if they're pushed out of public spaces, with shelters being almost always at capacity or over, they are away from their resources that they need to survive, especially if it's in the colder months. You also lose community support. Homeless individuals often build informal support networks with each other in similar situations. So if they are around the city communicating with people in similar situations of them, this forces them to move frequently and can disrupt these networks, making it harder for them to find what they need, especially if they don't have a means of communication. It also creates social marginalization and stigmatization, such as isolation. Laws that prohibit sleeping in public spaces can further stigmatize homelessness, reinforcing social isolation, and it marginalizes unhoused individuals, making it harder for them to integrate into society. Please consider these concerns and questions when making your decisions to one of North Dakota's most vulnerable populations. They are really struggling as it is, and so if they can get more support instead of less, that would be great. I know it is inconvenient to have them sleeping in public properties, but someone who is sleeping probably doesn't have the intent to hurt you. As I said, not every individual situation is the same. These are people, families, veterans, mothers, and children, so please, please remember that when making such an impactful decision, as there is not one good approach for all of this, but these inherent risks and these inherent risks that can and will be posed upon these vulnerable populations in North Dakota can create additional cascading problems. So thank you. That's what I have to say unless there's any questions.
First name again.
Katie Leach.
Okay. Katie, are you able to stay to the fruition of this discussion?
Yes, I will be.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Mayor and Commissioners, I echo what was just said and also the need to partner with our social agencies in the creation of such an ordinance, but also thank you for your service to the city of Bismarck and your willingness to discuss this complex issue for our community. I am Reverend Gretchen Deeg and a local church pastor, and it is of great importance that our city be safe for everyone, whether they are housed or unhoused. Thank you for the work of our police department, our social service agencies, public health department, and legal department for your ongoing discussions on how to achieve this goal. As I understand this ordinance, according to the background information from the Bismarck Legal Department, the ordinance is intended to prohibit encampments where individuals set up fires, tents, furniture, and other items that are more than a person can carry. And the sleeping in public portion of the ordinance is much narrower and does not prohibit sleeping in parks or other city, county, state-owned property except right-of-bays like alleys, streets, and sidewalks. This keeps the city right-of-bays, including doorways, clear. Having clear right-of-bays is important for everyone in our city, and this ordinance helps to address that issue. However, I would draw your attention to the ordinance in the third section, camping prohibited. To maintain the stated purpose of this ordinance, I would ask the commission to strike the words "park, bench, and any other public-owned property or under a bridge or viaduct" from the first sentence. These words take the ordinance beyond their intended scope and into a different issue, which can only be solved by reducing homelessness and establishing a low-barrier emergency shelter in our city. Bismarck does not currently have a low-barrier emergency shelter. We must establish a place for our citizens experiencing homelessness to go before prohibiting people from sleeping in public. Thank you. I would stand for questions.
Commissioner Risch.
Mr. Mayor, Reverend Gretchen, so what were you at again on the ordinance? Were you on it struck as number three?
Number three, under prohibit.
Okay, second line, park, bench, or.
Camping prohibited? Yep. Strike, park, bench, or any other public-owned property or under a bridge or viaduct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Beth DuWash Day. Emily Running Hawk Imachiapi. Hello, my name is Emily. I am a person in recovery. I am a student at United Tribes Technical College, and I am a resident here in Bismarck. And I just had a few questions, I guess. So it was reported that the police station fields numerous calls regarding individuals who are unhoused. Is this information documented and maintained within the city for statistical purposes? If the city and law enforcement could be more transparent to the community about this nature and the nature of these calls, this would create an understanding as to the demand and more regulation in our community. And my other question would be, where will these people be forced to go? Pushed outside of the limits to walk where? Which direction? And it's not only my people, it's every people, from different backgrounds, different walks, and races, and ethnicities. So we talked about North Dakota being a good relative. Where's our good relative at now for these people? They need help. They don't need to be pushed away. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So can I ask Deputy Chief or the Chief to come up and respond to at least the first question, if you can, regarding statistics? I think it's only fair to get the answer or attempt to answer while the question was
So I didn't hear everything you said, Mayor.
So the question was, can you restate the question, Emily, please?
The question is, is this information documented and maintained within the city? Like, are we, does the public have access to these calls, to where the police are going and where they're taking these people from? Like, where's that documented? Is it in a newspaper? Is it on a website? Is it available for anyone to see?
It is. There's a map, and somebody can help you get to it, because I don't, it's on the city website, where you can see all the calls and service that we go to. There's a delay, because we want to make sure that we're always safe and that people, it's not the exact addresses that we go to, but it's the 100 block, so everybody has an area and knows the area, because we want to single people out. So you can look at that. We provide an annual report every year. We don't discuss homeless issues, though. The. The calls for service that most of the time, if there are homeless, it's, we're doing welfare checks on people a lot. We're doing some, well, somebody gets drinking in downtown in public. We get a lot of those calls, those kind of things. And so those are all documented and you can all look at them at any time.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Conley, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's all right. To kind of back up what the police chief said, a few years ago I did four ride-alongs with the police department, full 12-hour shifts. And then I also contacted Burley County Sheriff and I talked to them and I did full 12-hour shifts on both their shifts. And there are a significant amount of calls out there to address it. It's in no way, I'm just stating that as an experience so I could learn more, not any way on impacting the decision because I want to hear from everybody. But there is a recording, it's a timestamp thing, and information is available that can be resourced through a lot of different avenues, but we have to follow the legal ways to get that information too and staff can help you with that.
All right. Little dollar. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Matt Hall and I ask, have all stakeholders been consulted? Not just the immediate stakeholders such as downtown businesses and the homeless individuals, but advocacy groups such as Ministry on the Margins and the Downtowners, or the city departments that be most directly affected such as the police and public health. However, this doesn't have to be an issue that pits two groups against each other, but the relevant group should be consulted together to develop a solution that solves the issue for businesses without pushing those that are homeless out and creating a new problem. As proposed, this creates a problem before providing a solution. There is no sufficient shelter for these folks to go to if enacted now. Where are neighbors and homelessness supposed to go? Lastly, as Jason mentioned, intent. I want to talk about that. As we all know, this comes from a Supreme Court decision where many legal scholars focus on the intent of those that craft the law, but in the end is bent to the will of the interpreter. Therefore, I ask you to make sure the guardrails are kept on this rule so future city leaders can't abuse it to harass our communities most vulnerable. Thank you. Seemed to have lost the pen. Oh. All right.
Okay.
Yes, please.
My relatives, my name is Two Eagles, Carol Two Eagles. I walk with a pipe. That makes me a spiritual guide for many people. The pipe is holy. And I have been up at the North Dakota Legislature every single year, beginning in 1997, testifying on grassroots people's concerns. And I've been quite successful up there. In the last few years, I have brought this matter of homelessness to the committees and it resulted in House Concurrent Resolution 3030, which went to the Interim Committee on Government Services chaired by Representative Ben Koppelman and vice chaired by Senator Tim Matherne. They're both from the Fargo area, pardon me. And they are studying the situation, so you might want to work with that. I'm always available for questions from you and them and any guidance that I can give you. But I was requested by homeless men in 2020 to try to find a better way for them to live than what they had. And we did come up, I and my board, I created everything because local attorneys said this isn't needed. Until one day I lost my temper and I said, that's because you guys just stand fat and sassy on the unmarried ground of people in and out of jail and prison. And they said, so what? That's atrocious. I think to make your decision tonight on this proposed ordinance is much premature. And I would request that in Section 4, you have the thing about 24 hours, I would ask you to double that to 48 hours. Because if you're on foot, especially if you're somewhat mobility handicapped, I dance on these. But walking and carrying a load can be a real problem, so can pulling some kind of cart. And many of these people have something similar, but they're not on crutches or canes. So I think instead of creating criminalization, whether intentional or accidental, you need to work with this some more. And I'm always available for questions. And if, Mayor, would you accept my business card?
Sure.
Thank you. If you have any questions, okay, if you have any questions, you can always get ahold of me. Email is best. I tend not to answer the phone simply because it seems the phone always rings when I'm driving. And I just won't try. I don't text while driving, I don't talk on the phone while driving, I'm driving. But I would love to be able to help with this some more. I've put four and a half backbreaking years into this and I've even slept in the truck through a winter and a half and I've stayed at the shelter on South 12th at the request of legislators for about a winter and a half, gathering what they called accurate unedited data and submitting it to the legislature. So if you would like my help, it's there for you.
Thank you.
I said, thank you. You are all my relatives. Oops, and I have a pen that doesn't write. Please. Thank you. Here, I cursed the pen. Just a second. Oh, okay. There we go. Thank you. Did I give you the card?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Heidkamp and I am the Executive Director of Youth Works. I have been at Youth Works since 1987. Youth Works has served the homeless, the runaway and homeless youth and young adults since 1986. I'm very familiar with the challenges. I appreciate the challenges that you have and the business community has in dealing with these issues. I'm here tonight in support of the Missouri Valley Homeless Coalition's position. Certainly at our agency, our goal is to prevent long-term homelessness by working with youth and young adults. And those challenges only are compounded by everything that you read about mental health and addiction crises as well. And so I don't think we can deal with this issue, I don't think you can deal with this issue without also looking at how we address mental health and addiction problems as well. And so I'm just here tonight to kind of support that what I would like to see is more discussion and to table this a little bit and give a chance for all of the providers, those of us who have been doing this for a long time, to be at the table to kind of talk about positive solutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jenna Gallo, the Executive Director of the United Way. Seems like not too long ago, just yesterday, when Melanie Heidkamp called me up in 2017 and asked our United Way, Jenna, it's snowing outside, will you help to shelter the homeless? And yet, it seems like another lifetime ago. Since then, the United Way has built a permanent homeless shelter for the community located on South 12th Street. We offer 24/7 shelter to men, women, and children. We also have coordinated 35-plus providers to come onsite to provide regular and consistent services to help people out of poverty. On the first night of the first snowstorm in October of last year, we sheltered 144 individuals. Many of the folks that come to our doors are suffering from a severe and persistent mental illness, are in recovery from their addiction, come from the prisons, have a traumatic brain injury. We are fierce advocates for the most vulnerable people in our community. So while we are a member of the Homeless Coalition, we do not serve on the Coalition's Board, and I understand that the Board crafted their position that was emailed to us members today. Our United Way Board has not met on this ordinance since your last meeting two weeks ago. But I can confidently say that United Way supports the needs of our law enforcement and our business community. In my experience, our law enforcement have been kind and compassionate when helping the homeless at our shelter. Based on your press release, which is the information I'm working from, this ordinance gives the Bismarck PD the tools they need to address issues such as encampment, furniture lining the streets, and large amounts of personal belonging. I can say at our shelter, it's a priority that we keep it a clean and dignified place so that it can be welcoming and safe and so that we have room for people instead of belongings. Last night, our shelter helped 95 people, 19 of which were children. It's heart-wrenching to have policies that limit the belongings of the homeless, especially when they've lost everything. But sometimes rules are necessary to serve the greater good. I'd like to thank Mayor Schmitz for your comments in the Bismarck Tribune when you say, when you have a call to the public to support the nonprofits working on addressing these needs of the homeless. I know that our data says that when we have proper funding, 80% of the people we serve at our shelter do not return to homelessness. Right now, we have difficulty even addressing facility needs, yet alone the needs of our clients. We need help, as do many of the other wonderful providers in our community. We care very deeply about the needs of the homeless in our community. My five-year-old and I pray every morning on the way to preschool for those who are hungry, those who are homeless, those who are alone. Whether the ordinance moves forward tonight or not, United Way looks forward to more conversation about how we can be a part of a solution to address this growing need in our growing community. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Conley, I'm, sorry about that, Commissioner.
That's all right. At least there's nobody here to confuse my name with.
Yeah, Commissioner Conley, I think has a question.
Couple of them. One, thanks for what you do. Part of it is when we talked about calls and stuff that another speaker talked about when I was doing the ride-alongs and then as well as when I worked at SenCom. There are a lot of trips made down there to support a lot of people through that corridor. And just nodding, you're kind of confirming that. So that's why this question is coming up before all of us today. Back when the shelter was being built, it was originally thought that it would cost a lot less and then it came out quite a bit higher originally.
To, is that a question? Did it come out a lot higher? Well, due to COVID, we delayed the building of the shelter and we significantly downsized, yes. The Board made that decision because we are good stewards of donor dollars and it was important for us to not overbuild so that we have beds for hundreds of people.
Right. And the reason why I bring that up is not, it's not to try to say, I got you or prove or anything, it's just some of these decisions.
I don't feel got.
Yeah. Some of these decisions, it takes a lot of collaboration in order to overcome some of those costs and things and that was just merely why I asked the question is because I remember those conversations when the call for projects versus going into COVID, when you presented in front of the City Commission at that time. So I paid attention. So, but I appreciate you answering.
When?
So, I'm, it's me trying to keep up with my mind sometimes, so I apologize.
We've paid lots of attention and we've dedicated a lot of man-hours to trying to fill this need for the city.
One last thing is, like I mentioned with Katie, are you going to stay for the full fruition of the conversation tonight?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Are you going to stay till the end of this conversation tonight?
I sure can. I have a babysitter for my five-year-old.
I get that. My kids used to be shorter than me.
Any other questions?
Well, thanks, Jenna.
Thank you.
This is public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak, please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Giradeen. I work for High Plains Fair Housing Center and we are a fair housing group in Bismarck. But I want to start my hearing with a personal thing. Back in 2019, I had a fire. My apartment burned down. I'm sorry I'm shaky because of that. I was one call away to be homeless, never did drugs, never got in trouble. But as a new member in the city then, I was without family, with nobody who I knew I could run to. I was one call away to maybe end up on the street downtown. And I was able to pull myself on the straps because I had a job then. I was working, I was working in prison back then too. So how, my story actually goes to where I heard people within the prison systems who would just want to come in for a night, just to have that shelter over their head. So when I hear ordinances like what we're about to do tonight to our city, I'm thinking about myself. Also, I know when laws or rules are passed, one thing I'm thinking about is, especially when it comes to law enforcement, who is, who will be impacted by those laws? They are minorities, they are people like me. And there are people who come into the city and just try finding their ways. I've spoken to a lot of people who came into this city just to live and they fell back by one bill and they ended up on the street. And we, they'll have all their things with them as we know. So if we are passing something like this, I really want us to not just think about how it looks on the face, but who is going to be impacted by the law? Because law, a person like me on the street or a colored person in general, we are always like more endangered than any other person. I just wanted to put that out. Also, I wanted to talk on, are we, where are we like sending the funding? I'm a taxpayer in this community, right? Where would our funding be go to? We've paid more funding to have our police officers like keep our cities safe, but I really don't see us doing more when it comes to homelessness or like giving resources to the service providers. I've seen like a few times where our community, we've, the mayor, you've done something, right? I saw you do like a fundraising for homelessness some time back. Yeah, little things like that, but we are really not doing enough. Where we put our resources matter, right? And for me, I'm scared we are going to put more resources in law enforcement instead of providers who are going to help these people get off the streets. And when they get off the street, they are going to stay off the streets. Also, lastly, I wanted to talk about a lady, she's actually on the street right now. Every time I drive, I see her. But she came to the office, she was, she was actually a victim. She was actually evicted. There's a lot of eviction happening in the city right now, and she was evicted. And I took her to 12th Street so she can pass the night. And since then, every time I pass in the city, I see her sleeping in one corner or the other. She was seventy-eight years old. Not because she can't find a job to go back to the life she lived, but because our community doesn't like give you the opportunity to pick yourself back. So I'm just thinking, I want us to think about this. Let it not just be another loss in the book, but we think of people when it comes to making things like this. And also, as a taxpayer, I want my money to go to making people feel better than just opening another jail cell for a community member. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Valerie Cicados. My family used to be homeless for seven months last year, and it was really abrupt. Luckily, we were only on the county waiting list for housing for eight months. So that first few weeks, we were homeless, and we were camping. We were staying at Sibley, which sounds nice, I know, in the summer, but it does come up to quite a bit. One thing a lot of people don't understand is how expensive it is to be homeless. We were able to get into the United Way Shelter, and luckily, we were able to keep pulling enough means together so that we could get a shelter... A storage unit for our stuff. We did still have quite a lot of stuff in our car, which people would like... That was crazy, but after a while, I realized that that was kind of the norm. So in addressing our own housing pricing risks here, I think that it should be unique to our own community. This ordinance really only holds the unhoused accountable for living in survival mode. A real issue in our community right now are the predatory landlord practices and where there's accountability for them. Our current laws lack the ability to hold landlords accountable in their role in perpetuating homelessness. In recent weeks, I know of an entire family who were forced to do nothing else but be put in a position to live in their little tiny car. And this family is about six people strong. So this was a direct action from an out-of-state landlord who had no care or thought of this family. And the stress of living on the streets did cause them to freeze for a few nights in the car with small children. And one of the young indigenous women who do live with that family, she ended up having a miscarriage. So excuse me for getting a little shaky. It was a terrible, terrible thing that happened. So Bismarck is smarter than following what other cities are doing. We have elected officials such as you, who are trusted to make decisions that are best for all of our community members, trusted to protect everyone in our community, including our unhoused community members. Hala me. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Conley?
Since we're talking about an ordinance, and I'm going to go off a little bit from that from what she mentioned, because I think it's important, because it's one of the drivers for this issue. So I don't know if the context would be a point of order or just stated, but when we talk about the predatory practices of out-of-state companies, it's come across this table, and I've been pretty forward about it. We need more people standing up and having part of this conversation, because the state legislature's passed two laws, and we're not finding people that are willing to enforce them. When Colonial Estates was taken over in 2017, they bought it above market value. The lot rent was around that 230, 235 area, and with fees, they're above 700. A lot of these folks are the ones that work in our McDonald's or our Walmarts where we want better price of goods and those type of things. Well, if their cost of living goes up so high, then all the businesses have to raise the rates, and we create a cycle that furthers that hardship. Our sister city right now, well, the Colonial Estates, they came in with a thirty-seven-to-thirty-eight-page lease that was... A lot of it was not legal in here. And I think they do it on purpose, because people are exhausted, they knock it down to a seven, eight-page lease, then we get the next investment company. Across the river, we're seeing some forty-page-plus leases and things. So we need more people speaking up and advocating, because it's creating a lot of hardship for the dignity of all our citizens. So I appreciate you bringing it up.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hello, my name is Ashley Johnner. And I guess a direct concern about the ordinance specifically is who is being held accountable? So the picture that was circulated was living room furniture, I believe on Thayer. And how did it get there? When we often see individuals in our community on the streets, a backpack is a heavy load. So I'm not sure the last time we saw someone carrying a coffee table or one of those heavy office furniture pieces of equipment that were sitting there. So my concern is, is who put that furniture there? Are we holding the correct people accountable? Is it guilt by association that an unhoused individual is then sitting in furniture that was maybe dumped by someone with a pickup, who had furniture to get rid of? And if law enforcement is not seeing who dumped that piece of furniture, then how are we holding the correct people accountable for those pieces of living room furniture on our streets? It feels like the most vulnerable in our community are the ones who are taking on this burden and being held accountable. That's all I got.
Thank you.
My name is Miki Shilly. I have a couple of things. First, I'd like to question the timing of this. I mean, winter is coming, and you're talking about leaving things on the street or encampments, which is shelter. Winter is coming. This could prove to be fatal to some people. I mean, we have homeless shelters, they're full. You have to be sober. Not all of these people are sober. These are the most vulnerable population in our community. Maybe they only have a tent and a sleeping bag to keep from freezing to death, but you want them to move on. Where are they going to go? I do believe this ordinance is criminalizing the homeless. I mean, what is this so-called tool that law enforcement will utilize? Law enforcement can get involved in criminal activity, not civil. And this proposed ordinance, number six, under mitigation, it states, "Upon conviction for a violation or to any underfactors deemed appropriate by the court." How is this not criminalizing the homeless? Stacking charges on individuals who are unhoused only extends the length of the homelessness. Adding additional charges to the unhoused individuals make our landlords look unfavorably towards them. Sometimes it even bars them from low-income housing and adds an additional financial burden when they are owing to the city, further fines and frees, and creates more barriers for these individuals to create stable housing. In Grants Pass, Oregon, the unhoused population can be fined up to fifty-two times once a week. A fine attached to their law... Or their enforcement's "tool," quote, is a charge of $300. A woman living in Grants Pass recently shared that she was charged thirty times in the last year for living outside. That total is $9,000 that she now owes the city while she is trying to save for her own apartment. So this so-called tool is not a solution to a crisis situation. It is the opposite. It is going to make it more difficult to obtain housing for our vulnerable population in our community. And again, I don't wonder why this is the first thing to come up. Why are we not criminalizing the egregious acts of our landlords that are creating these homelessness? I mean, we're talking a vulnerable patient... Population. These are human beings. These are also your constituents. So you can act because a certain part of your population is uncomfortable seeing things. Where are they going to go? Are they going to walk to the outskirts of town? Are they going to, you know... Are they going to confiscate their shelter, their sleeping bags? What's going to happen? Why are we putting this into place before we have resources for them? I would also like to add, people seem to think that homeless people are drug dealers or mentally ill. I am currently homeless. I have been homeless since June. My house I was renting was bought and sold. It was bought and torn down to build a law firm. I have a husband who has a... Unfortunately, has a record that's been over twenty years. They're still holding it against him. We have animals. Three years ago, I was in an auto accident, unable to work for about a year, unable to walk for about a year. So my credit rating is not bad, it's just non-existent because I haven't used it in three years. Since June, we have been looking. We are two... We have two adults in the household, working both full-time and part-time. We both have several jobs. I am lucky enough to work in a hotel who housed me for most of the summer. I mean, I was able to pay almost over four... Almost $4,000 a month to live in that hotel, but our area landlords aren't going to give me a chance to pay eight hundred for an apartment. So I mean, I would like to see more emphasis regulating our landlords who are not being held accountable for anything at this moment than criminalizing the people who are vulnerable. Thank you.
This is public hearing. Anyone else?
Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Susan Wyant. I'm a property owner and a business owner in downtown Bismarck. What I have witnessed, I have seen individuals passed out on the sidewalk and on our benches. I have seen dirty needles left on the sidewalk. I have seen public drinking, sitting on bench... I have seen public drinking, they're sitting on the benches, and also walking, holding their bottle. I have been approached for money, for cigarettes, for drugs. I also, at one time, had a man run up to me. As he was holding his cellphone, he's screaming at me, asking me, "Give me your phone, give me your phone. I have to call the cops. I have to call the cops." I was in the process of going into my apartment at the time. I walked away and told him to leave. I've also seen people sitting on the edge of the cement downtown, relieving himself, squatting. Did you know that years ago, there was also a porta potty downtown for the homeless? Gee, didn't take long, and it was vandalized and it was removed. It is not that I don't care about the homeless, I do. But I also care more about my family, my city, and the downtown area. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward.
My name is Cindy Meidinger. I have lived in the city of Bismarck for almost my whole entire life, which is seventy-plus years. When I was a girl, my girlfriends and I could walk downtown on a Saturday. We would leave our house at 8:30 in the morning. We would spend the whole Saturday downtown. We never had a problem. Now, I can't go shopping, and I have to worry about people asking me for money, asking me for food. They are laying on the boulevards. I mean, I understand people have problems, we need to solve it, but I see part of the solution to this problem, the people that are asking for help need to have some skin in the game. If you don't have any skin in the game, you don't care. I drove by Walmart South two weeks ago, and that bus shelter that was... That sits there was totally filled with garbage, paper from Burger King, McDonald's, whatever, pop bottles, you name it. Blankets and everything. I don't think we... I don't want my city to look like San Diego, Chicago, Seattle, San Diego... Oh, I guess I said that already. But anyway, that's my problem. If people are homeless, we need to help them find a job so they can have some self-work and put some skin in the game, not just always give, give, give. Because if you keep giving, they keep expecting that. Let's fix the problem so that they can be a productive member of our society and pay taxes to boot. That's my story.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody here, and everyone that came to offer their opinions and heart to the matter here, everybody that came up and spoke, and everybody that they represent, whether they represent somebody they know, their business or community. Thank you, everybody, for coming. My name is Corey, Corey Anis, and I... Right now, I'm coming just as a community member with a little bit of experience working with our homeless population. I can't say where I work, but I do work directly with our homeless population, the ones out of lockup that are in recovery, as a care coordinator and a peer support specialist. And that's a very complex situation, very messy, and it's not very clear, and it's very difficult to solve. You know, it's like what we've been hearing is it's an ongoing thing for years and years. And I do commend everybody that has put their efforts and created things for our communities, you know, like David over at Soup Cafe. I got the opportunity to meet him and have a conversation with him one day, and it inspired me to be a better person, a better man, and see his heart. And I appreciate you for spending time with me that day. You know, the creator, the organizers, the people who put together the United Way, people that work at, you know, even like the ministry, they have a tough, tough situation, a tough... A tough situation as a person, a person that wants to help the community, a person that wants to help as a person of God, or, you know, whatever drives them to help other people in these situations. It's very difficult. It's very difficult to see, and I understand. I'll just speak on behalf of our homeless, you know. Something kind of came to mind as I was hearing things, you know. I know that the ordinance that we're talking about is worded in such a way that kind of like sort of takes the homeless conversation out of it a little bit. And I feel like sometimes the homeless situation in any other... Worded in any other way is still a homeless situation that we need to address. And I just wanted to speak on behalf of the homeless. You know, when you talk about skin in the game, for example, they all have their stories, and I just happen to be one that hears a few hundred of their stories in the past few years. And it's very complex for them, too, and it's not as easy as getting a job or giving them a job or giving them a place. You know, there's barriers they face, the barriers they have, whether it's... And one of the barriers that is common is the mental health part, the mental health component. And even the gentleman here that... And even the gentleman here that, that, he recorded, you know, this man that was yelling at him. I recognize that man, you know, and, and he's, uh, mental health, very severe mental health challenges. And he'd been, he yelled at me a few times, and, you know, it, and I didn't really know how to handle them until I was trained, you know, until I was trained to handle a person with mental health challenges, going through the training specifically. And so it helped me do my job a little bit better. But the thing about the homeless is it's, it's not as simple as giving them a job, a place to live. You know, they've got their barriers there, they have records and things in, in, in the way of, uh, what we would look at as a successful life. A lot of them been, been there for months. I've, I've, I've worked with people that have been homeless for days and homeless for eight years. And their, their stories are very complex and messy. But my heart goes out to, to all of them, and I just want to take into consideration that, you know, I'm sorry for everyone who has had to deal with somebody in a negative way that, that's been homeless out there in our communities. Man, they've just been through so much, and a lot of them, like I said, have mental health challenges that they're not, they're not, they don't have the, they didn't, haven't had the, the help or ongoing help. You know, those of us providers in the community, we, we do what we can to get them housed, we get them maybe into counseling, we get them into treatment, you know, and, and there's a kind of a cycle with that, that we have to deal with as a whole, a whole community. It's very difficult, but I commend everyone for trying, um, here that, that has a voice for them, for the people here. I'll, I'll say that much. I just came to maybe say a few words on behalf of our homeless people. You know, my prayers go out to them, and, you know, my, my daily work is with them, and hope that I can make some kind of difference for them. Sometimes I, I don't, but we try, we try our best, we try our best to address every situation that we've talked about here. Homelessness, addictions, mental health challenges. There are people out there that are doing it, and if anyone's here that's doing it, you know, keep doing it.
Thank you. Commissioner Conley.
Can you just state your first name again?
Cory, K-O-R-Y.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Cheryl Carey. I'm the Executive Director of the Sacred Pipe Resource Center. Here in Bismarck, we see, we serve the Native American population. And just want to say I'm very proud of our community for getting up here and speaking about these issues that are very dear to them. We have at the Sacred Pipe Resource Center a housing council that addresses issues of housing in the city of Bismarck and Mandan. And I think all of the information that they're bringing to you is very valuable. I hope you really take it in the spirit, the helpful spirit with which it's intended. In looking at this ordinance, I can't help but think about that saying, "When you're a hammer, everything looks like a nail." And in the intro to the session, the phrase was, "We've addressed many complaints from property owners, homeowners, business owners, all owners." So if enough homeless people get together and complain about the need for affordable housing, would be able to get that? Just asking. But what I'd really like to say is, I'm, I'm really asking you guys to go back to the drawing board on this ordinance. As hard as it is to see homelessness, it's even harder to be homeless. And there are no easy solutions, we get that. But this ordinance is not a solution. At best, it's just another way to burden and already burdened law enforcement and nonprofit organizations. At worst, it just adds another cog in the wheel of chronic homelessness. And you have to ask yourself this question. Why do so many so-called homeless solutions never include actual lack of housing? And then you just have to stop being the hammer. Thank you.
Thank you. This is public hearing. Anyone else?
Thank you for hearing us all out. I am Renee Nelson. I live in the neighborhood. I welcome you to drive up 24th Street and see what this encampment is. I have yet to see a tent. I have seen office chairs loaded up with their belongings. I have seen shopping carts loaded up with their belongings. I have seen plastic Adirondack chairs with their belongings or for them to sit on during the day so they can be comfortable waiting for Ministry on the Margins to open. It's convenient when Ministry on the Margins first opened that all these people were on their sidewalk. But now, they have no trespassing signs around their building. So they're over on the boulevard and sidewalk of the Mark V Motel. And making things even worse. They don't care about themselves when they walk across the street. They go at a turtle's pace or a snail's pace. They're in no hurry. They don't care if there are cars coming, if there are one car, five cars. They just walk across the street. We teach our children to look before you cross the street, not just go. And to hurry up if there's a car coming that you need. I am, I have called law enforcement several times about several different things going on down in that area. There has been cars parked down there for days with their hoods open, their trunks open, their doors open, people living in them this summer. It is, I can have empathy for some things, but when I see the same people in the same positions, in the same location, every day, three or four times that I drive by there, every day, no matter what the day is, my empathy kind of goes out the door. Thank you.
Might I add just a little bit of data to this discussion?
Sure.
After homeless men asked me to find a better way for them to live, and I started on this. I started looking into when was homelessness first documented here? 1640. There wasn't even a nation called America yet. 1640, that's 384 years and counting. The system generally comes in as the instigator. In all the data I have found, and I have a 32 gig flash drive that is two-thirds full right now with data. I'm not going to inundate you with it, but I've got it if you ever want to see any of it. And, um, so again, I say, I think it would be much premature to try to vote this ordinance in tonight. It needs a lot more study, even after 384 years. And since the 1970s, 71, I believe it is, the homelessness statistics have skyrocketed. That was Vietnam. Vietnam was my people's war, my family. And I think we set some kind of a record since indigenous people enlist oftener than all the other races. We lost 28 people to Vietnam, and I still have relatives who are homeless. And I'm unique in the entire state, and I know it. I had three corporations. We own land, and I can't live on it in the winter. So I have to make other arrangements every fall because landlords have said, "I don't know what to do with you. You don't have a rental history. You only owned property." Excuse me? I thought that would be a plus. Apparently not. And there is nothing in the law, state, or local, that requires accountability for every $30, $40, or $50 background check that the landlords collect money for, and there definitely needs to be. Because many of them just take the money and stick it in their pocket, and they flip a coin or decide whether or not they want you. And being as I walk with a pipe, I live on a vow of personal poverty. So the companies get all the money I bring in, but I don't have a credit score, and I haven't had for 33 years. Does that make me homeless? No. Does that make me mental? No. Does that make me in any way, shape, or form bad or criminal? No. Makes me unique, makes me dedicated, makes me hard-driving, makes me quite willing to go where most people aren't willing to even think about going, let alone going. And I'm, I don't care if I'm the only one in my parade, but you need to know that these things happen. I know people from the shelter system who are there because of crushing medical debts. The worst case is a man I know who was a successful rancher and had to sell everything, and he's still living in one of the shelters in Bismarck. And he'll be there until he dies. But he's not the only one. So please, give this a lot more work before you pass it. And again, I'm always available to help. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Commissioner Conley.
My name is Kami Zinker, and I am the owner of the Mark V Studio Apartments. So I appreciate the words of Renee describing our business. We, my husband and I have owned this business for almost 17 years. It has been in our Zinker family for over 40 years. And I think people forget at the end of the day that this is a home. This used to be my home, where I brought my first child home. And it is no longer a safe, clean environment on the outside of my building. People leaving their furniture, their garbage, their blankets, smoking, drinking, no respect for quiet hours for tenants that I have that pay rent, that work normal Perkins jobs, that are just trying to make it in this world too. And they've tried to go out nicely and ask them to stop with their screaming and their yelling and their cussing. And what it results in is I've been calling the Bismarck PD almost two to three, four times a week because of these issues. I had an issue today of dumpster diving that my husband and I witnessed while we were there picking up garbage. I have had where I am picking up office chairs, and it's taken two people to get it into the dumpster for 12 hours later to have a homeless person come dig it out of my dumpster and continue to roll it down the street and fill their garbage on it. Sunday evening, I received a call from a tenant about 7:30 at night. I had a gentleman and a lady that were fighting in our dumpster. They were literally digging clothing, furniture, going through my tenant's trash, had it all over the alley. I had to call the police, and they had to come and intervene with that. And I could go on and on about the things that we have done. We have been landlords that do not charge an application fee, for those of you. We have been landlords that have rented. I have a couple tenants that were homeless at one time. But you've got to start somewhere, and you've got to have that motivation to want to start somewhere. And so I'm just asking that this ordinance be passed and that it be the first step in a process that we do need some more community resources. But what we're doing right now is not working, and the problem is getting much worse. And that's all I have to say. So I appreciate your time.
Commissioner Rish.
Where's your property located again?
We are located on the corner of 24th and Broadway, 2316 East Broadway Avenue. We have the higher quest behind us. We have Ministry on the Margins across from us. And like somebody stated earlier, we never had this issue. And I was wondering, why are they not hanging out on their yard? Because they're hanging out on mine, and they're not showing any respect. I've had maybe one or two homeless people come help me pick up garbage. And I shouldn't have to do that every day after I'm done working my full-time job. I've even had to have my children witness people that are belligerent and not acting appropriately because on our way home from school, we have to stop by the Mark V to make sure it looks safe, it looks clean. I have tenants that have been there almost 20 years. This is not fair to them. Not fair at all. It is not a safe home environment anymore. So thank you.
Commissioner Conley, did you?
Yep. I appreciate the testimony you shared. When we talk about the predatory landowners, some of the companies, the investment companies, it's about making high-dollar amounts, 17% to 23%, and they're driving up the rates, and every single time a property is sold, the value of the property throughout the entire city goes up. And when that property goes up, they're pricing out the local owners, the single-family owners that care about the community. The people, the worst I've seen is a company out of Washington State, and they're so aggressive that, um, it's absolutely devastating the local owner because they can't keep up. They don't have a choice but to raise their rents because they have to cover costs or they lose their property too. It's a vicious cycle that we need to get ahead of. And we are in a position to where there's very few local landowners. Not all local landowners are perfect, and some of them are bordering on not great too, but there are some really good ones out there too. These corporate companies from Utah, from Florida, from Washington State, they are upsetting our apple cart and, um, been working at both the state and local level. Every state in the country is chasing it. So I appreciate what you're saying. It's just a big lift.
Yes.
So we're trying to get there.
I know, and I agree with, you know, all that about the landlords, but not every landlord out there is a bad person. You know, I consider myself a very good person that works with BTC, worked with people that have been homeless. I do what I can to help them, but they got to have that motivation. They got to have that drive to want to better themselves because I can't do all the work for them.
Real, just real quick.
Yep.
Just to expand on that, obviously, you could tell that Kami had the same last name as I did. It's a family business, but I'm not part of that family, so full disclosure. Yeah, I'm sure you did, yeah. One other thing, if we could just leave the landlord conversation out of the, out of the testimony, I mean, let us, we can have that discussion maybe when we get to the, to discussion after the motion or whatever, but let's just stay focused on the ordinance, if we could, please.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hi, my name is Josh Kimmely. I, I work downtown and I live downtown, and I would like to second what this last lady just got done saying. I see a lot of the, the drugs, the booze, the handguns, the, uh, the belligerence. And not all of them, not everybody who's down there or in camping downtown, but, but you do see it. And I'm in favor of some kind of legal action that would help the police facilitate maintaining order and making it civil downtown so that people feel comfortable, they feel safe. It's inviting to come down there, walk around, to eat, to shop. And right now, you're hearing more and more complaints from people who don't feel safe. They don't like the aggressive panhandling, they don't like the look of, of what's going on, there's garbage everywhere. And I'm not sure that this, this new ordinance would solve all of our problems, but if it will help the police maintain some order, I'm personally in favor of it, and that's all I really have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else wish to speak?
France Plenskowsky and Interiors by France, Interiors by Design. And I'd just like to say that I was in a neighborhood since nineteen sixty-eight. Anywhere from starting at Senex to Interiors by Florence to Interiors by France, now Interiors by Design. And it's really a sad sight of how our city has let it slide from nineteen sixty-eight to what it is today. And the value of the land, the value of the buildings, real estate, has all slid backwards. And I mean, I'm just wondering, is there a plan in place? What do we plan to do in the future? Who is going to be the leadership of taking care of this issue? I would like to have some answers. And Joe Hyman is also, I value his, when he spoke about it, as to what his thoughts were, I agree a hundred percent. And I don't know if any of you people own any of the property in that neighborhood of downtown, but it would be very handy if you would buy some down there. I've got some for sale. Thank you.
In this public hearing, anyone else wish to speak? I'll give a second call for public comment. Final call for public comment. I see no more public comments, so I'm going to close the public comment. But Jason, would you, at this point in time, probably read Commissioner Cleary's comment so that it's out for the rest of us?
Again, Mayor Commissioners, those in the audience, these are the remarks of Commissioner Ann Cleary, who was not able to participate in the meeting tonight. It says, "Mayor and Commissioners, understanding that I'm not able to be present, I wanted to share my thoughts on the encampment ordinance for the public hearing. I understand that this ordinance is a tool for the police to use and is necessary in some scenarios. Being a downtown business owner myself, I do see how any makeshift housing or encampments has a negative effect on the commercial tenants and buildings. I do not think that to be effective in its implementation, there will be other steps. I do think that to be effective in its implementation, there will be other steps that will need to follow it. From a public health perspective, and keep in mind Commissioner Cleary holds the public health portfolio, from a public health perspective, we have seen other cities implement similar ordinances, and I am going to use Fargo as my example. Within Fargo's implementation of their ordinance, they have an outreach team that assists officers or sometimes responds to these complaints first to be, to best help connect the individual to services or housing when at all possible, so that we aren't simply enforcing the ordinance, but not having anywhere for that individual to go. Though the police force in Bismarck does have a connection with West Central Human Services that they will utilize, I do think that strengthening that connection or even creating some version of an outreach team will be necessary. I think we should view this ordinance as one step towards creating better solutions for the unhoused individuals in our community. If passed, I would like to see a more collaborative, excuse me, I would like to see more collaborative conversations with our community partners on what the next steps will be. After attending the most recent board meeting with the Missouri Valley Coalition for Homeless People, I do think there are some unanswered questions from the providers and caregivers when it comes to this ordinance. I do support the ordinance as a step in addressing these issues, but as a community that relies heavily on the nonprofit organizations who make up the homeless coalition, I do think addressing their concerns should be a priority. It is my hope that those concerns and questions get addressed at this public hearing or at the public, or that the public hearing is continued to help work on addressing additional concerns. Ann Cleary, City Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioners, thoughts, comments? Commissioner Risch.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I've got a couple of questions. Maybe the city attorney or Jason could answer, or maybe someone. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reverend Dag mentioned that she thought it was inappropriate that they have the language in park bench or any other publicly-owned property or under the Vidacre Bridge. And I think the implication was that there's no place for these people to sleep or whatever. But when I read the ordinance, it talks about campsites, not so much sleeping overnight. Could you maybe clarify that?
Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Risch, that's correct. So the sleeping portion of it is a separate item, and that is solely about basically ingress-egress, sleeping in doorways. For instance, the Provident Building, there was some of that, blocking doors that come out at the event center or businesses. So that's the only area where sleeping is prohibited, is those types of things. So if you're on a bench, you're not blocking access. If you take up the whole sidewalk, you're blocking access, and that's where that problem would be with sleeping. So there's no, and there would be no problem with sleeping, there would be no enforceable issue with sleeping under the bridge with this ordinance that isn't prohibited. It would only be if the acclamation of property qualifies as a campsite. So it's different. And then it also provides for a way to handle that property that's kind of set out for law enforcement, too.
Commissioner Risch, yes.
Another one, the witness has talked about fines of three hundred dollars a week, and it sounds outrageous, somebody's got nine thousand dollars worth of fines building up. I didn't see anything in this proposed ordinance about fining anybody. Can you clarify?
Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Risch, so we don't have jurisdiction to fine that much as it is. Now, that, if someone is indigent, typically, they wouldn't have that type of fine. Perhaps that's a restitution amount or something, or it could be county charges or federal charges, I don't know, but it wouldn't be a municipal court. We cannot charge more than fifteen hundred dollars is the max fine for any type of violation that we can charge. That's the limit of our jurisdiction, and your limit for any type of enforcement. This is something that would be classified as a Class B misdemeanor, but along with that comes some protections for being able to be provided indigent defense counsel. And if it was an infraction, it would just be fines. And for folks, that's probably, in this circumstance, not appropriate. Just because something's a Class B misdemeanor, there are a lot of ours that our standard offers are a hundred or a hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine. That's very common. But there are some extra protections for the defendant that come with having a Class B misdemeanor. So I think I answered your question, but maybe I didn't.
Well, so violating this ordinance would be a Class B misdemeanor, and you could fine them up to fifteen hundred dollars, people that don't have any money to begin with?
Yeah, and we don't do that. I don't even see that very often. Like I said, the max is fifteen hundred. We rarely do that. For law enforcement, it's more about being able to get individuals to comply. If we don't have the ability to be a Class B misdemeanor, it limits the options for the law enforcement officer to try to get compliance. So that's also a component to this. And I'm sure the chief or DC would be able to explain that better as well. But that's, they always try to get compliance before we have to go to the route of charging somebody.
Any other questions? Commissioner Conley.
I do think it needs work. I think we do need to have an ordinance of some type. States that are much more progressive than North Dakota are seeing an overrunning of every service availability that they have. And they're taking steps that we think are way too aggressive. So if we're not thoughtful, we have to be thoughtful to the people. The challenge is, is that if we don't start instilling something, folks are going to go to the communities that don't have ordinances. And that's going to be a huge challenge, because we're trying to keep up with people that are here, let alone if we get a lot of influx from outside. And if anybody hasn't noticed, we have a bipolar weather system all the time here. Maybe not quite as bad as the people we pray for down in Florida, but there are times it's significant. So I do think that, at the same time, I didn't write down the name, I should have, but the gal that said, "The first documented in North Dakota was sixteen forty." Throughout history, we've always had unsustainable needs in the areas of homelessness. We've had things that, there will always be a greater need than the resources available. At the same time, I, when a person said skin in the game, just the very fact that we're living, just the very fact that we all have skin, that's skin in the game. There's good and bad consequences to all of us, and if we ever get to the point where we're showing contempt that one person doesn't have dignity over another, we're on a very slippery slope that makes us question our humanity. And at the same time, I've had discussions with people to where there's, coveting gets us in trouble, to where we desire the resources that another person has to the point of demanding. This goes beyond party or where people's stances are in things. This comes down to human decency. We've got to get past that. And there's always significant costs that go with this. At the table here, we run into a challenge that's called quorum, and that's why we have portfolios. So there's only certain people that can have conversation. That's how the law is written. It creates a little bit of a nuance. It's hard. But cost is a big question, and then where do they go? And I've talked to a significant amount of people in the last two weeks and working on some things to where there would be no cost from the government's standpoint, because once we start going down there, it's unsustainable, and we just end up in a rabbit hole. Our budget's three hundred and seventy million dollars. There's a lot of people with property that are also starting to feel crushed, and it's a hard thing. So I would make a motion to table this until November twelfth, and so we can have further discussions. I know Commissioner Cleary, her portfolio is the homeless coalition, and some of those discussions are going to have costs with it. So as we navigate it, you can talk to two, this is the quorum thing. You can't talk to three, otherwise we have a serial-type meeting if Janelle can explain that a little bit better and that, but there's a lot more, but I'll stop there.
So I have a motion.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Go ahead.
If I may, Mayor, I've got a few things that I'd like to kind of address, too, as I had questions that went down the...
Yep, absolutely.
So first of all, I'll start off with the gentleman, Corey, who said this is complicated and messy. I absolutely agree with him. And we really can't, if you want to make it more complicated and messy, just let government add more ordinances, right? I mean, it's not just a simple humanity effort that needs to happen. And I talked to a senator about this a while back, and he's absolutely right, that this is a, this is a people issue. And the easiest way to solve it, not easiest way, the most compassionate way to solve it is with people. Maybe, maybe government can be a facilitator, but you don't want government to run it. So with that being said, I just got a question because it came up on the stakeholders. What stakeholders, obviously, the Missouri Valley Coalition wasn't part of it, because they already put a letter out there, but who from staff can answer what stakeholders you talked to about this ordinance? You notice I said who, so I didn't personally put somebody on the spot. Thank you, Chief.
Sure. Mayor, Commissioners. So as Jason said, when he, when this thing started, we just didn't, you know, just decide one day we're going to do this. So Renee and her team and us from Police Department, before we did anything, we got ourselves on the same page, make sure that we have the right plan to do things. After that, Jason was visiting, Jason and DC Stuhlmeyer was visiting with Lyndon Ring from West Central Human Services, as they would be the service providers we would contact. Reason we would have to contact them is they actually have people that will go out and visit with the people if we call them. My friend Ashley over here, I don't know if she's still here, she used to do the outreach, but she no longer works at West Central. But she and, excuse me, a lady from Ministry on the Margins, they did that, and they were having some success. But as far as I know, nobody's doing that right now, unless they get called. So that's our only resource that I know of that we can call to come and get, go talk to people.
Okay, thank you. So when, when they were doing that, and if, I don't want to put you on the spot for dates or anything, but you said that they were successful when they were doing, were...
They were having some success.
Some success?
Yes.
What, what, why did it stop? Did they just not have volunteers, no resources, or...
Not exactly sure why it stopped.
Okay, that's fair. That's fair. Okay. All right. The other thing that I would, I would address is, yes, there are issues with landlords. I'm good, Chief, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. But that's not part of this ordinance.
Right.
And that's, that's a much bigger lift than, than what we can do. Personally, if we just did it within the city of Bismarck, it would, it would complicate things even more. If the state wants to take that on, or, you know, above that, maybe, I don't know. But for us to put limitations on what people can do with their business, I don't think that is justifiable at this table. If you want to lead that charge and do it, have at it. The last thing I'll say is, everybody that was here, and I appreciate this, and I kind of summarize this, is not everybody's looking for a handout. We have to look for a hand up. And all of those stakeholders that were mentioned tonight, Ministry on the Margins, Missouri Valley Coalition, United Way, The Soup Kitchen, the West Central Services, to be honest with you, from a, from a city commission perspective, we're looking for your help. We really are. Because of my first comment, that if, that if I got to get involved and make decisions for this from a government perspective, I'm going to make it too messy and too complicated. And I just, I just hope that this group, that you can, you can come together, as Jason said earlier, from what it was started under a previous mayor, that we just, we just get it done, so to speak. Without anything, no hugs and kisses, just roll up the sleeves and let's get it done. So with that, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Commissioner Conley.
Commissioners, Zinker, I don't disagree with a lot of what you shared and things. The reason why I did bring up the landlord process, though, I've been an advocate for this since 2017, there's a lot of years. There's a lot of discussion been going on at the state level. There's been a lot of people, and this is, every state's trying to get ahead of this. In 2021, a mobile home park that was privately owned here came up in front of our Board of Equalization, and they asked for an abatement because it's a pass-through cost. And they didn't get it, so they passed the cost on to the people living in the park. And it was a million-dollar-plus. The following year, it was another million. Now, that particular park is owned by a corporate company. There's two legislative sessions to where laws have been passed to help us at the city table get ahead of some of these things that's driving the homeless net rate. We're up twenty-six percent over the last four years, and we're not finding the people willing to enforce those state laws. And if they're not willing to enforce...
And if they're not willing to enforce, the fact that we record our meetings to where other people can see, like you said, we need help. We need help from the community, we need help from the state. I would kind of like to see if Bismarck, if not North Dakota, was the first to get ahead of this very difficult conversation over the rest of the United States. It would be a nice thing for the very people that are here, that live here, that grew up here. So that's why I took those moments. I try not to overwhelm you with information, you know I got a lot of information, but people are feeling unheard, so I took those little snippets to take that time. But I agree with a lot of what you said, but that's why the landlord conversation came in. Yeah, I'll stop there.
Other comments? Commissioner Risch.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this proposed ordinance doesn't solve the homelessness problem. We've got Renee Mauch with the Bismarck Burley County Health that's working on a bigger, bigger process ongoing, but it is a first step, because we have some egregious stuff taking place out there. We need to give the police some sort of tools to deal with some of the bigger problems of campsites, or chairs, and sofas, and all kinds of stuff all over this community. I've got a friend that doesn't want to stay downtown anymore because she's afraid of going out at night, so we need to give the police some tools to do this. And I'm a compassionate person. I think we've got to invest in this as a city, or the state should invest in it. It's really a statewide problem, because the other communities don't provide the services like we have here in Bismarck. And for those watching on TV, it's not the city that's providing the service, it's these very compassionate nonprofits that are providing these services. So these other cities don't have any kind of help, whether it be Mandan, or Jamestown, or Napoleon, or New Leipzig, so they come to Bismarck, or they come to Fargo. So I look at it as really a state problem, and we need to have the state involved and engaged in trying to solve this problem. This doesn't solve homelessness, but it's a step forward to try and keep our cities safe and clean up some of the more egregious problems we have.
Commissioner Conley.
And that's why I made the motion for November 12th. I do believe we need to take steps in that direction. It's been two weeks. There's been a lot of discussions had, and it gives us a chance to see if we can at least get through this winter, because winters can be harsh here, and the question of cost and where do they go? And can we find an answer amongst all of us to take that next step? If we pass an ordinance tonight, one month, what's, we've made it this far without this. I mean, how much worse off would we be? All the partners here ask for a little bit of time.
Again, as Commissioner Risch stated, this ordinance is, I know it is affecting individuals who are, it's affecting their property, or potentially where they are resting their head at night, so they can't be in certain spaces. This ordinance is never going to, this by itself, solving homelessness is not, as Commissioner Zinkar mentioned, it's going to be a very difficult lift. I don't think you want the city government into the business of solving that. I think we need to be a partner of it, and we have had those discussions around the table. There is a major effort that needs to happen. I, you know, waiting a month, waiting three months, I don't know when the right time is. Unfortunately, we have a difficult decision to make at this table. And sometimes we have to make difficult decisions that don't make everybody happy. That's part of our job. So I mean, I appreciate everybody's comments, but those are just my thoughts.
Can I amend the motion?
Well, no, go ahead, Commissioner Zinkar.
Mayor, Commissioners, hang on, Mr. Conley, just hang on one second. I do got a couple of things that I think we could maybe have just a little bit of conversation about. Commissioner Risch brought up the park scenario that's listed in there. Can we list the park in our ordinances if they already have a board, that they might have rules and regulations for their parks? I don't...
I'd like to just kind of stay in our lane, I'll wait for City Attorney Combs to answer that.
Mayor, Commissioners, Commissioners, I do have overarching as well jurisdiction, so if somebody's committing an assault in the parks, we have jurisdiction. So we could technically, legally, yes. I know there's been, I know PD speaks to parks on a regular basis.
Yeah, so maybe they...
But the content, I don't know.
Because I think, I've seen signs in the parks that say they have hours or whatever, so...
And those remain.
Those are, okay.
That is not...
This has nothing to do with that.
Yep, that doesn't have anything to do with it.
Then the second question that I have, City Attorney Combs, if you could stay. We just recently had an ordinance that we had where we kind of gave them three strikes, so to speak. Is there a possibility to do that with this ordinance as well?
Mayor, Commissioners...
Like if we run into the same person and, hey, move your stuff, we come back, now it's an option for, cite them for a violation, I guess?
Mayor, Commissioners, so this is, yes, we can draft it, I'll draft it however you tell me to draft it, so I can do any of those things. But it's more of a question for PD.
Okay. And preface that before DC gets up there is, I understand we're not, if this passes tonight, or if it passes November 12th, or in three months, or whatever, that we're not just going to send 14 squad cars out there to look for this, right? This is not a priority by any means, so, thank you.
Go ahead, DC.
So, yeah, I'm Deputy Chief Jason Stuhlmeyer with the Police Department, obviously. Yeah, we want to be very compassionate with this ordinance. I've crafted how I want our officers to proceed with this ordinance. And it's very important to note that there is a 24-hour period that we want to give them, and that's minimum 24 hours. We're not going to be there right on the 24th hour and getting them to move along, but we've talked with our partners at West Central, they manage 988, which is a crisis line, and a 211, which is more of a service provider line where they will go out, explain services, et cetera, and what they need to do to be in compliance with the law. So I guess our expectation would be that we don't really have to enforce this, other than going out, explaining what the law is, and then hopefully we don't have to enforce it, but there may be a time that we need to. And obviously, with any new law, we want to educate the citizens and the individuals affected on it before we go taking 14 squad cars out there running. And again, this is complaint-based, so again, we don't have time to be proactive on it, but if we get a complaint from a citizen, that's when we would address this ordinance.
Thank you, sir.
If they're not compliant, moving out of the doorway?
Yeah, so... Yeah, okay, so as far as the infraction or beat misdemeanor, we can't arrest for an infraction. So if we had somebody that was just really failing to comply, and we've made numerous attempts to get them to move, and social services have been out there and they're just refusing, it would be impossible for us to enforce the ordinance because we couldn't arrest. Therefore, the beat misdemeanor would have to be in effect for that, so...
Thank you.
Other discussion?
It's regarding the parks.
Okay, yeah, I'll let you ask. Yeah, it may not be our jurisdiction.
So like, is the parks the same as the, like, the national parks? Like, is that kind of the same? No? Like, I mean, like, how the parks throughout the US, how a Native American can go and use their ID to camp at this campsite, or to get into these other places? Like, is General Sibley a park like that?
I don't know the answer to that.
General, Mayor, Commissioners, General Sibley is outside city limits, and it falls under Burley County's ownership, but ultimately it's managed by Bismarck Parks and Recreation District, which is separate from the city of Bismarck.
Okay.
This ordinance would not affect it.
All right, I just had some clarification, so like...
That's a good question, though.
All right, do we have any further discussion? Commissioner Conley.
I would like to amend my motion. Motion to table until November 12th. But for anybody, and I don't know how this will work, maybe Janelle will have to help me with it, but if all of the people in the room could help us, if folks need, say, a sidewalking thing, move that to government property, but let's respect our private property owners, and let's not trespass on those. We have trespassing, we just updated that, didn't we, Janelle?
We have trespassing, yes. We trespass.
So if we can keep from people getting that, to buy us time so we can work on this a little bit more.
Do you want to withdraw your motion? Or amend it?
He made a motion to amend it, if there's a second, if there is.
I'm, I don't understand what the amendment is, for sure. That's my confusion.
To table it until November 12th, but no trespassing on private property if people need a place to stay and it's a public sidewalk, or buys us time.
I need, Janelle, please.
Mayor, Commissioners, so Commissioner Conley, you can't trespass on private property already, that's the law. If the owner says that they want someone to leave, they can make them leave. And this ordinance wouldn't affect private property, it's about public property, other than doorways to businesses would be about the only thing that would be affected.
And that's where I said I might need your help on it.
Okay.
Trying to see, I mean, we got a lot of stakeholders in the room that asked for a tabling, but there's also a lot of people that want something on the books for an ordinance. So how can we, is there a way we can accommodate both to get us to November 12th, as we can work on some things to get us through the winter?
Mayor, Commissioners, Commissioner Conley, so to pass some type of ordinance for now that will get till November 12th, or to not pass anything?
Kind of like what we do with planning and zoning, where we say this with conditions, is that possible in this sense?
Mayor, Commissioners, Commissioner Conley, so the ordinance either gets passed, I mean, there's terms of the ordinance, I can't do a conditional ordinance passing.
Okay. That's what I needed to know, I didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how I could, you could condition it on a date that it becomes effective, a certain date, if you wanted to do that. Right now, it has to be published before it can be effective, so I'm not sure, you're wanting something that can be enforced in the interim, is that what you're saying? Or something that provides, I understand the tabling part, so...
Trying to protect the people that have an investment in their own private property, and respect all of the things that they have to overcome, because there's a lot of businesses trying to stay open. At the same time, not having a record of somebody being visited so many times, or possible breaking an ordinance, so to speak. There's been some good discussions this last two weeks, but to just kind of spill them out, I think it's a little preemptive yet. And I know the Missouri River Coalition, not going to say the whole acronym, been working with Commissioner Cleary, there's just, there's kind of two different discussions, if not more, going on. So there seems a little hesitancy to do nothing. So trying to accomplish a little bit of both.
Okay.
And it doesn't seem like it's possible, so...
Yeah, I can't, we can't enforce anything unless it's passed as an ordinance. I don't know what else I could do to give you something in the interim that would be effective. You could do the education component or something, that doesn't necessarily require an ordinance, but their difficulty is they don't have anything to enforce, so I don't know what they would educate regarding.
We can always change at this table any ordinance that's enacted.
With a majority vote, correct. As long as it's constitutional and legal and not preempted by state or county.
I'll start all over, and I'll take a next swing at it, but...
We just get rid of the motion.
Yeah, I withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay.
Second meeting in November is 26th, right?
Tomorrow's October 9th.
I'll tell you, it's on our, the 26th is the second meeting in November. It's on our agenda.
Motion to approve the ordinance with no enforcement until we've had discussions through November 26th. It'd just be educational, like Officer Stuhlmeyer.
So, are you, is the motion that you're making it, the ordinance effective then?
Yep, probably.
We have two more opportunity, or, we'd have two more opportunities to where there's a break in between, to discuss it further or amend it by that time.
Then would we not have, we'd have to do public notices and hearings and...
Remember my comment about government getting in the way?
I withdraw my motion. I'll let y'all decide. I tried.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, do we have discussion?
Mayor, Commissioners, I will reemphasize the fact that I said earlier about our stakeholders, and that we need your help to help solve this, and I have no problem with Renee and her team being the facilitator of that.
Other discussion? Commissioner Conley.
I'm still going to carry forth discussion because the option that I'm working on is something that would be no cost to the city and no over-ordinencing or laws, those type of things. I'll be saying, motioning yes to it when it comes around, to hopefully open up those dialogues and better conversations, because of the greater issue about, something will have to be in place, so we can concentrate on the people here versus the people that might come from outside of here, because we're much smaller, there's only so many resources and we'll run out.
Other discussion? Commissioner Risch.
Again, this is not the perfect solution, it's not even the solution, it's just a step forward. We're counting on Renee over Public Health to put together a coalition to figure out ways, and we need help from the community, we need to support these nonprofits that are helping the homeless, and I'm all in on that. We've got to do what we can. We need to give people a leg up so they can get back into society. I don't think this infringes upon that effort.
Any other discussion? Here and then we'll call roll.
Commissioners, I...
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Next item, E., consider request to hear insufficiency of protests on resolution of necessity for street improvement district SI 583. I believe Gabe is finding his way up.
Mayor Commissioners, SI 583 is a lighting project, zoom in here, consisting of eight units in Bismarck. Most of these are new construction areas, where we've constructed new roads in the, in the recent years, and are developing the adjacent properties. Some of these, units five, six, seven, and eight, are areas that where we've had a road for a while, and, so in particular, unit eight is a section of Fourth Street. The summary that we have up here would indicate, and, and we agree, that the enough signatures for unit eight would have been obtained, or given to us to protest that unit out, so it's a lighting project on Fourth Street. Unit seven is what you heard from earlier, from some of the members of the public, where three of the protesting parcels protested and submitted, which occur, or sums to eleven percent of the land area, which is not enough to protest out the improvement by, by sentry code, and so you would have the ability to still move forward with that particular project, if you would so desire. So, with that, I would take any questions that you would have, but our recommendation would be to accept the insufficiency of protests for units one through seven, and to accept the protests for unit eight.
Questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, so, as presented, we, we take out section eight, but number seven, we could also take that out, if we chose as a commission, even though it was not sufficient in the protests.
Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Rish, I guess you would have the ability to take out any of these units, as well as, you know, cancel the entire project, or cancel any project, really all of those decisions are up to you. This is just a process that is in sentry code, that allows for the landowners to weigh a vote into the improvement. If over fifty percent of the land-owning parties protest the improvement, then the improvement has to be, I guess I should say, it has to not be paid with special assessments. You could still move forward with unit eight, as long as it wasn't using a special assessment to pay for it.
Commissioner Conley.
With the two, like, what Commissioner Rich said, even if they were not assessed, per se, would they still get the monthly charge, month after month, or would they be exempt from that as well?
Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Conley, our current fee structure for Public Works Service Ops, and the lighting component of that, is triggered by the proximity of a street light, so if that particular landowner did not have a street light within a certain radius, their, their property is not brought into the fee structure for maintenance for that, for, for the lighting system. So I guess, I don't know if that was what your question was, but the payment of the improvement would be special assessed to the entire district, which includes other properties, the other, all eighteen properties, and I should even mention, properties that we have listed here are only those that are not owned by the city, or a park district, or a school district, because those are not included in this summary, even though they would pay a cost, or MDU would pay a cost, I should say, MDU is in the district, but property that the city owns is not included in the protest summary, but would be paying its share for the improvement as well.
You did answer the question right away, so, I appreciate that. Have you been to the site yourself?
Yep, Mayor and Commissioners, yes, I have.
Okay. And, is it true what the one gentleman said, that there is a private light pole in almost every yard?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, that was on the, the Fourth Street segment, so, yes, that is true, there's some yard lamps in the setback, you know, on the private property, that illuminates more of the homes areas, and not so much the street, where we would find a potential conflict of someone crossing the road as a pedestrian. So, yes, there are yard lamps, but we haven't done a lighting analysis to determine if that meets a, a lighting standard, those existing lights that are there.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rish, and then Commissioner Zinker.
Oh, excuse me, you have an end. Oh, but to be fair, we could pull item seven out, and later revisit it, and install lighting?
Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Rish, this project is currently out for, in the market for potential bidders to bid on, so if we did not want to move forward with a potential unit, we'd want that direction now, so it can be removed from the project, and we don't open up a bid for a X amount of dollar project, only to then say we're only going to award half of that amount, and, and kind of put our bidders at a disadvantage by doing that. So if it's, if the desire to move forward, we want to move forward, if the desire is to, to not move forward, we just want that direction, so we can update our plans accordingly.
Commissioner Zinker.
Mayor Commissioners, Gabe, I just want to address the one question that came up from Mr. Borman, about the light being between the, the trees, is, was that just a conceptual drawing? Or do we take into account, I mean, obviously, Doug would be more application to this, but, hey, let's not rip up a couple of trees and throw a light post in, right? So, what does, I mean...
Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Zinker, the maps that we sent out to the adjacent landowners, especially on this, this Clydesdale Drive, included approximate locations of where the lights would be, to give a sense of where they would be located. We had included information about the house side shield that they would have, so that the light, if it's on the, the west side of the road, would be able to project most of its light down, and then to the east, so that really none of that light, or a very little amount of that light, projects backwards, or, or to the west into the property. So that's kind of the reason why we would put the lights, or one of the reasons we would suggest putting the lights on the west side, and we wanted to be able to communicate that to the, the potential adjacent property owners of where that would be. But we haven't determined exactly where each light would be, and we would do every measure we could to avoid impacts to trees, access points, et cetera, that are already existing.
So, related to unit, unit seven, because that's the one we're talking about, Mr. Borman, in his letter, and I think we spoke it to, there's already lights up there, is that accurate, or are those really not city lights, those are those yard lights?
Mayor Commissioners, Mayor Schmitz, there are some properties that have yard lights on, on the property that illuminate potentially their, their driveway area, but they don't illuminate the street. They're not in the right-of-way, they're all on private property.
Okay. And then, secondarily, in the table you have presented with us, there's three parcels in that segment, and it may not matter anyway, but did those, were those three also represented by the individual who testified tonight, or did someone testify who was not one of those three members?
Mayor Commissioners, Mayor Schmitz, from my understanding, the, the letters that we received were, and we had one individual testify on the Clydesdale, and that person was here, the other person testified on the Fourth Street, and that person, we've received that letter as well.
Make sure, I just want to make sure if we're counting, making sure we counted anybody who hadn't...
Yeah, they're back-to-back, they're all, the three who, for the, and the group of section, or, unit eight are all one.
Okay.
I'll make a motion we pass any ordinance without provision seven and eight, or pass the, as presented, without seven and eight.
Excluding seven.
Okay, got it, yep, I got it.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second order, is the discussion. Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Mr. Zinker?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. All right. Next, item F., consider request for approval change of order two for WU 143, water main replacement project.
Mayor, Mayor Commissioners, thank you. This project would have gone on the consent agenda, as it's pretty benign in, in nature, but we kind of became aware of it late, later than the agenda would suggest, or allow for us to, to place it on that agenda. So, I have before you a change order for our water main utility replacement project for 2024, to replace a block of water main on Raymond Street, between Rossar Avenue and Avenue A. This area was recently identified due to a, a recent water main break, it's actually scheduled for our 2025 project, but then started breaking earlier than we would have liked. So, our contractor has the capacity to do it, and will hold the 2024 bid prices, so we would like to take advantage of that opportunity. If this passes, we will be notifying all the adjacent landowners of the potential disruption. We typically do that in a mailer, weeks before, but this will be more of a knock on each door, and hand-deliver the mailer, because it'll happen pretty quick if this is approved. Without a take, any questions you may have.
Commissioners, questions?
Move for approval is presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Do we have any other business tonight? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.